Good evening. All this giddy excitement is all due to the city council study session for Tuesday, October 14th, starting at 6:30. So if the clerk could please call the roll.
Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Roshino Farrell.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Train.
Very good. Thank you for that. And if we could have the pledge of allegiance, please.
Please rise if you're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Stewart. And if we could have the land acknowledgement, Councilmember Gupta.
We acknowledge that we are in the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Thank you. And if we, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved to second. And is all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Before we dive into topics, I just want to let folks in the room know that we are going to be doing presentations first, because this is a study session, and then we will be going to public comments. So I want to set expectations appropriately. So for our first presentation, we have Evergreen Health with Dr. Pizzazo, CEO of Evergreen Health. Thank you.
There we go. Look for green. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Mayor Howe, Deputy Mayor Lamb, City Council, City staff. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm Dr. Torrey Palazzo. I'm the superintendent and CEO of King County Public Hospital District Number Two, also known as Evergreen Health, also known as the community's east side owned hospital. I am really pleased to be able to come tonight and share information about your public hospital, noting that Hospital District, which we'll talk about tonight encompasses a portion of Samamish, and also share, you know, some of the landscape of what's going on in healthcare currently. I know we only have 10 minutes. There are a lot of slides. I'm going to zip through quite a few of them so I can keep time and hopefully make sure there's time for you to have questions of me. I think the first thing that I would point out, I've worked at Evergreen for 22 years. I started as a staff physician. I've cared for many, many patients, served in many leadership roles. In my over two decades that I've been with the organization, I think I can say with confidence that the words on this slide have never been more true. And the organization has experienced probably the most difficult time in its 58-year history over the last five years with the pandemic, and more challenges yet to come with some of the funding difficulties that all healthcare organizations that's not unique to Evergreen Health are experiencing. Proud of this, and probably one of the main reasons I feel I can say with confidence that these words are true today is the result of what you see on this slide. These are our Board of Commissioners, and while each of them individually, I think, are incredibly remarkable, it's the concept of our governance structure at a public hospital district that allows us to stay true to our mission, vision, and values during some of the most challenging times in healthcare delivery. We are a public hospital district. We are one of the few independent hospitals left in the Puget Sound region in the state. And when I look at these individuals and who they report to, who their shareholders are, it's one. It's the community. It's you. It's us. It's not Wall Street. It's not a corporate entity somewhere distant from where the care is happening. That is important, I think, more than ever, given what's going on around us. This is a map of our district. The green outline is Public Hospital Number Two for King County. So you can see Samamish, not the entire city, but a portion of it. I think the boundary is down to southeast 8th is the lower portion of the hospital district relative to Samamish. There's about 330,000 residents in the hospital district. We also have a partnership with Snohomish County Public Hospital District Number One. That's Evergreen Health Monroe. They're delineated on this map of the teal outline, much bigger geography, much smaller population. When we look at our total service area, which is defined by the Department of Health of where over 75% of individuals come to receive care to our services, that's the peach sort of color. And the total service area where the vast majority of all of our patients come from, which is the combination of the gray and the peach or teal, I'm sorry, peach, is about a million residents. This title is really important. During business as usual, or some of the most challenging times in healthcare, we know why we exist. And it's for one reason. It's take care of our community. We are a municipality, and it is unique in the fact that the district residents not only get a say in how we're governed by the fact that they are elected commissioners, they serve six-year terms, but also the fact that we have community advisors. In fact, one is with us this evening. That is a Samamish resident. Wendy, can you wave? All right. That give us guidance as well and feedback where we're doing well, where we're missing the mark. And that allows us to, I think, move the needle when, even when it's challenging, to understand what our district and our community needs. I promise not to go through every number on this chart, but I think this helps a reflection of what we do. From the start of life, Evergreen Health delivers the second-most babies in the entire state, 4,500 last year. We also have the last freestanding inpatient hospice unit in King and Snohomish County. So providing care at the end of life is equally important, and everything in between. When we talk about our hospitals, when we talk about our clinics, when we look at these services, some of these happen from a business standpoint to have a margin and pay for themselves. Many aspects of what we do, including hospice and palliative care, do not. We don't make decisions based on a profit and loss statement. We make decisions on what the community needs. We do need to understand how we run our business to be able to be effective in doing that. We also make sure that outside of the four walls of our hospital and clinics, that we take care of patients in their homes. And we have the largest post-acute care, home health, hospice, and home health PT service in Puget Sound. We don't do it alone. We have partnerships with Fred Hutch, one of the most renowned cancer centers in the entire world. And their physicians are right on campus with us, along with Seattle Children's. And very excited to share that earlier this summer, we entered into a larger joint venture partnership with Seattle Children's so that more of our kiddos that need services either in our NICU, Neonatal and Sensive Care Unit, or our Pediatrics Unit can stay right at home in the community, not need to be transferred over to Seattle for a higher level of care. And we're really excited about that and what that means for our community. Samamish is important to us. When you look at what we have relative to our services and where we support the activities of the community, whether it's community-based organizations, I joke when I put a slide like this up and say, you will never see the Evergreen Health brand on a professional sports team in town here. That's not how we spend our sponsorship money. We spend it where the community-based organizations need us and where we volunteer there. Some of the district sponsorships are listed here. I think it needs to be noted that we used to have a clinic right in Samamish on northeast 8th. We do not any longer. We'll talk a little bit about that, but also glad that just seven miles, actually 6.9 miles away, we have two primary care clinics, a freestanding ED, as well as an urgent care, and some of the decision-making that went around doing that and that closure and why that happened, and what the future might look like as we address that. That's yet to come. We have a levy that is provided by our community. And with that, we are the only public hospital district that I'm aware of that uses maintenance and operation levy funds to reinvest in the community, both through internal and external programs. $6.2 million was invested in those programs in 2024. You could see the various areas with mental health, caring for our seniors, focusing on determinants of health through our Community Health Access Team, and end-of-life care. Many of these things don't pay for themselves. They don't have a margin, but are incredibly important. And so using levy funds to support those programs is what we do and what we intend to continue to do. And we did that even during very difficult, challenging financial times. And I'm grateful to the board for their decision to continue doing that. It's one thing to provide excellent care. It's another to do it in a way that is truly exceptional. This is a list of a whole host of acknowledgements and awards that are provided. Every hospital is ranked, whether you like it or not, based on outcomes. And so organizations like Healthgrades, those are the blue badges, look at our outcomes based on risk-adjusted analysis so we can compare to, you know, hospitals that may take care of a sicker population. Things like Leapfrog, that's the green color. We get a letter grade twice a year. Some hospitals come home with grades that you would not be proud to bring home to mom and dad like back in the day when we got great report cards. We have been an A-grade at hospital for some time. And there's many on here. Medicare and Medicaid does a star rating system, and we've been a five-star rated hospital for 10 years, the first in the state. These grades are hard to achieve. This is the most recent grading from Leapfrog from May, and you can see we have great healthcare in Puget Sound, actually some of the best in the country. And you can see that based on how they grade us and how hard it is, you know, some hospitals, even with those effects, are not getting A-grades. We're proud to continue that forward. And when you look at these three main primary rating agencies, which are fully objective, right now in the country, there are only 10 hospitals that have achieved this at any single point in time. The list is probably even smaller if you look at the consecutive number of years. And, you know, we jokingly say, we don't call ourselves better than the Mayo Clinic or Stanford, certainly not Scripps, but we're number one on here because this is ordered alphabetically, and Evergreen starts with an E. So we'll take it. But in all seriousness, it's incredibly hard. Maybe someday Evergreen won't be on this list. Our intention is not to make a list. Our intention is to provide some of the very best care we know, what we would want for ourselves, our loved ones. And when you do it that way with evidence-based and some of the best providers anywhere in the country, this is what happens. I should have a transition slide that shows maybe some unicorns and rainbows, because I've talked a lot about some good things, but it hasn't been all positive in healthcare. This is from the Washington State Hospital Association. Financial losses over the last five years have been significant. Across all hospitals in the state, it's nearly been $5 billion of operating losses. The reasons are in the bubbles on the right. Expenses dramatically increased relative to what we get paid from both commercial and government payers. And when that happens in a very short period of time, based on how commercial contracts happen, we get in a situation where we're upside down. Evergreen was probably right in the middle of the mix of all the hospitals when it comes to this. Unfortunately, even before contemplating Medicaid cuts, which are coming as a result of HR1, hospitals are starting to have to make decisions that are very difficult. These are just some of the headlines for the last couple months of cuts here locally, cuts that are happening broadly on that upper-left. Healthcare layoffs, that was published in 2020, or in July, excuse me, 2025. About 15,000 jobs in the United States for healthcare have been cut, about 450 in Washington State. That number is quite a bit higher with recent announcements that have happened around us. Evergreen is not on this list. We are intending to do everything we can to not be on the list. When we know that access issues are even, you know, more challenging than ever, we are trying to find ways to increase access, not contract, even though financially there's reasons why this is happening. Busy slide. I'll be very brief on this. This relates to HR1. Cassie Sowers, the president of the Washington State Hospital Association, this is the quote that she put out on July 1st. And I don't think it's an exaggeration when we use words like disaster to talk about the funding cuts that are coming. When you cut a trillion dollars from Medicaid across the country over a decade, and you look at Medicaid payer mix for some hospitals like Harborview or Level One Trauma Center, nearly 40% of their payer mix is Medicaid. Some hospitals on the east side of the state, it's almost 60%. So when those cuts come, and you look at the percentage of individuals on the right side of the slide that receive Medicaid benefits, this is incredibly challenging. And my one message to you or anyone listening is, maybe you might think that Medicaid's not an issue for you because it's not what you need, or you don't even know anyone on Medicaid. But when this happens, and funding decreases at a time that financially it's incredibly challenging, more closures have to happen to address the financial issues, and more care then gets funneled to emergency rooms. We have a legal obligation, and I argue a moral obligation to take care of anyone, regardless of what their financial situation is or their payer mix. We take care of them in the ER when they can't come to the clinics because of funding cuts from Medicaid. Along with other challenges with cutting services, hospitals through the years have dealt with financial challenges by consolidating. This is a map of the Puget Sound region and what it looked like back in 2006. And now we're really down to, it says five, really four hospital systems in our Puget Sound region. Kaiser is listed when they took over Group Health. Kaiser doesn't necessarily operate hospitals in Washington State, so from a hospital system, we're really down to four hospitals. The most recent, Overlake, our partner, is just 10 miles south, are now part of the multi-care health system as they needed to look for support and to address some of the challenges financially and otherwise that they experienced. I'll wrap up with just a few final slides. I love historical perspective. 1972 is when the hospital doors opened. The community came together and voted in the public hospital district with 22,000 residents and a levy that was at the statutory maximum at that time to support services at 75 cents per thousand. Today, our bed capacity is much greater. We've grown by 15 times, 330,000 residents in the community. And over time, even though the tax base has increased, that levy has gone down to 14 cents per thousand. Most public hospitals deal with this by going out to the voters every decade or so, or depending on their situation, and ask for a lift in that. Evergreen had never done that until this last summer. And this is where we were amongst all the public hospital districts in the state with the rate. Again, tax base is different around the state, but the average was around 40 cents per thousand. We were down at 14 cents. And that's why, with everything going on, our desire to not only keep services open, but expand, we went out to the voters and asked for a levy lid lift the first time, and grateful that they said yes. What will we do with that increase? It went from 14 cents to 50 cents. It was a big jump. And with that takes us above the mean for public hospital districts. We plan on hiring more physicians to expand primary care to address that issue as well as specialty care. Behavioral health is a big issue. We need to address that. We're just scratching the surface. We have some embedded behavioral health in our primary care clinics. We want to expand that further. Our procedural space is limited. We need to grow that and the equipment that comes with that to attract the best physicians. So that's part of our work as well, and preserve those essential services that we know are important to the community that don't pay for themselves now. I'd like to finish with a pre-slide of campus. This is Evergreen Health in the fall. We're entering into the fall. It was a great drive out here as we start to see the leaves change. And with that, I'll close my presentation, but would be happy to answer any questions the council has for me.
Counsel, questions? Councilmember Farrell.
Thank you for your presentation. I just want to add a comment and then add a question. My family attend Evergreen in Redmond and very grateful for it. I have a family member who is, receives Medicaid, and Evergreen are a great facility where Medicaid has always been accepted. It's not an easy thing to find a provider that accepts Medicaid. Certainly very difficult to find a Medicaid dentist. So finding a facility that will take Medicaid where my son can go and receive care. And I know that every year we don't have to chop and change and find another provider. So very grateful to you guys for providing the great care that you do. And my question really was, and you touched on your presentation about our own Evergreen facility here in Samamish, and what do you see the future of that facility being?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilmember Farrell. Thank you also for trusting us with your care. It means more than you know. Like some of the closures that you saw that are more current from, on that slide that talked about headlines, we had our own situation about a year and a half ago. We had to look and see, you know, what does financial recovery look like for us? We had lost $250 million over the course of, in operating funds over the course of the pandemic. So again, that was middle of the road. And we looked to see, is there any consolidation that we can do to address, you know, some of those challenges? And we saw that we had clinics that literally were six miles away in Redmond. And I know that's a different city and a different municipality. But when we look at that distance and say, is there a way to consolidate? Also, with doing our very best to make sure that we didn't lose physicians and staff and get them resourced into other areas, that was a difficult decision that was made a little over a year and a half ago to close that clinic, which was primary care, followed by urgent care approximately a year ago. Now that we're on better footing, and by the way, we are. We are operating well. We had to work hard to negotiate new contracts with our commercial payers that have helped immensely. Of course, the levy will help as well. We're reevaluating our entire district to see, you know, where is there gaps in service? And where, you know, could we move to? No decision has been made, but we're in a position to start thinking about that again. And in the meantime, we felt good knowing that we do have services, two primary care clinics, a freestanding ED, and an urgent care just less than seven miles away for our community that's in north Samamish.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you so much for your presentation. Given the funding cuts and that, even if things improve slightly, it's probably going to be a rough few years at least. Do you have plans or are there things that we can do to create other types of clinics that people could go to instead of urgent care and emergency care, which tend to be significantly more expensive?
Yeah, the ideal certainly is to address preventative care before acute issues are leading folks to come to an emergency room, which not only is it, you know, not favorable for the patient, it's more expensive as well. So our goal is trying to make sure we have pathways for patients to get that primary care through a population health-based model. The challenge will be, if patients don't have funding, their concern, even if they don't have Medicaid, being able to come to a clinic. We have charity care policies that allow us to have patients apply for that. We did $14 million of charity care last year and wrote off about $30 million worth of what we described as bad debt, folks that weren't able to pay that we simply wrote off. Those figures are going to get bigger. There's not a whole lot more that we can do other than make sure that we have robust ways to continue to provide that care and find other avenues to fund the services. And for Evergreen Health, this is a challenge for a hospital with that payer mix that I described, like Harborview or those across the mountains, 60% payer mix. This is an existential crisis. We will see hospitals close. We will see further services close, to the point that I think a reevaluation of how funding is going to take place will need to happen. And it's just sad, in my opinion, that it will take that before we start maybe potentially seeing some changes there.
Let us know if there's anything we can do to partner, to, you know, help provide information or clinics for people to be able to come and get some of that primary care before they have acute issues, because I think everybody, everybody benefits when we have a healthy populace. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, I do have a couple of questions. Are you picking up slack where other organizations are not able to provide services? I'm thinking about in particular birthing and babies. I have to think that you are seeing an uptick there because I know that there are other clinics that are actually closing.
Yeah, the clinics that have closed OB services are a bit more remote from us in the Puget Sound region. We did have one situation in Seattle, but there were additional with Virginia Mason-Franiscan Health closing their OB services. But given the density of the other hospitals providing services, the bigger concern has been on the east side of the state. And when we think about traveling for care, some things are easier to do than others. And when we're talking about delivering a baby, you need to be within a certain region to be able to safely get to the hospital you need to or the birthing center. So with that in mind, from the OB standpoint, you know, we are, as I mentioned, we deliver the second-most babies in the state. We have seen those numbers actually come down a little bit as the population rate and birthing rate actually has gone down a little bit. But the bottom line is, we may have situations where other hospitals are not able to provide those services. If that results in folks coming, you know, west of the mountains to receive those services, that's a possible reality. Or, you know, relocating to make sure they have that kind of care available to them. That's a possible reality for us.
Thank you. And I apologize for the hard question, which is going to be, what happens if you don't get the funding? Do you have to stop certain services? Do you have to just tighten the belt? What's your plan B?
Yeah, Mayor Howe, you know, one of our plans was to see if the community thought that a public hospital district was still important enough to support by, you know, providing funding. And we are, you know, very grateful and fortunate, frankly, to have gotten the support from the community on August 5th. Those funds start becoming available in 2026. And as a result of that increased levy rate, our ability to keep services open and, like I said, expand, looks very different than than other health organizations in the state. Also, our Medicaid payer mix is, you know, relatively lower than some. So our position is a bit more stable than others. Our plan B is always to reevaluate services and say, what are our core services that we need to provide? And like we had to do a year and a half ago, to do some consolidation of clinic space, which unfortunately affected Samamish, that's a possible plan B in the future if we were to need it, but not seeing that as a reality at this point.
Very good. Well, if there's no other questions, then thank you very much for the information. It was valuable and timely.
Thanks for having us.
You bet. Thank you. And I'd just like the clerk to recognize that Councilmember Train has shown up. We go to now the second presentation, which is the 2025-2026 Departmental Work Plan Updates with Rachel, Vicky, Audrey, Angelique, Jim, cast of thousands.
Okay, good evening. Vicky Carlson for the Record Finance Director. I'm going to go ahead and kick this off. Just, this is part two. Last week, you had part one, which was focusing, oh, let me click this slide here. Last week was focusing on our non-departmental, our non-capital departments. Tonight, we're going to be focusing on the departments that have both operating and capital. And just kind of a reminder, as we go through this, there's really two key points that we're trying to hit with all of our departments. We want to give an update on the status of the current biennial work plan, and then also prepare and orient you for the budget amendments and adjustments that will be coming to you next month. So for the work plan overview, overall, we have been making very good progress on the work plan, but there have been some changes to it. And so we want to go over those changes and kind of highlight the big ones. Just as a couple of examples, some of the projects have changed timelines for a variety of reasons that are on the slide, but some of the main ones are, is that project expenses have come in higher than what we planned when the budget was adopted. And there's also been competing priorities, priorities that have come up after the budget was adopted that have shifted some of our plans. And then some of the schedules are just flat out outside of our control. You heard about some of that last meeting. You'll hear some more about that this meeting as well.
And if I may jump in here just for a quick moment, counsel, in chatting with Deputy Mayor Lamb, she was asking about when do we start building the work plan as part of our regular cycle? Since next year, we will be looking at building the work, the work plan for the next biennium. So we would ask that if you have thoughts and ideas, please start getting them to us now. There's no formality to that. But as you're, you'll be hearing from some of these projects, some of these will carry over into the next biennium. So we will be building, starting from that base, and then we'll be adding on some of these other components about things that are required, things that are already in progress, things that are pre-planned, and then whatever else there is. So just put a plug in that if you have items that you'd like council to review next year during the retreat is when we will be taking all those and bringing them back to you for discussion and direction at a policy level. Because next year is both our work plan, building of the biennial work plan for the next two years, and the policy direction for building the budget for the biennium for the next two years. So just want to put that placeholder in. Thank you to Deputy Mayor for highlighting that. And please send them to Rachel or I as they come up, and we'll start compiling those. Thank you.
Okay. And just so that you know, because we are going to cover a lot of information tonight, both on the work plan overview as well as the budget amendments and adjustments, is we are also going to be pausing after each slide or each section to ask for questions. That way, the questions can be relevant to what we're talking about rather than holding them to the very end of the presentation. So on to the mid-by amendment and adjustment. Again, this is a slightly different process than what you might be familiar with. But you will be seeing a summarization of all of the adjustments and amendments that you're hearing about last meeting and this meeting. They'll be coming to you for full review again on November 5th with plan adoption the end of November. And we are segregating them into two sections. So there are amendments which adjust the total budget per fund. And an example of that is adding a new revenue source, like the utility tax. And an adjustment does not actually change the total budget. It repurposes existing dollars to another project because of project plan changes. So amendments change the budget, adjustments do not. And when you see the summary come forward in do not. And when you see the summary come forward in in November, you will see each one listed separately with the dollar amounts. And if you have taken previous action, as example, some of the contracts you've already taken action on to approve, will document when you took action on that one. So you'll see the full list coming forward. Any questions on the work plan update or amendments before we move into the department presentations? Okay, so I'm going to hand it over to Public Works. And the plan is going to be, each department will go through the operations side first and then the capital side before moving on to the next department.
Thank you, Vicky. And good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council. For the record, I'm Audrey Sarsim, the Public Works Director for the city. We have a lot on our work plan and a lot of slides. Please pause me. I will pause at each slide, but feel free to stop me if I forget. Wanted to focus on some of our highlights. This, of course, does not include most of our day-to-day operations or more of our day-to-day permitting as well. We are bringing back the bike and pedestrian mobility plan next week to City Council to close the hearing, and hopefully we'll be planning to adopt that following that in July. The City Council adopted the Pine Lake Basin Plan. That's usually a two- to three-year effort. So that was a huge accomplishment for both the city and the department. We are kicking off right now major projects, and some of those you'll hear about this evening. Some are already in progress. Our payment management strategic plan is the next, next presentation following this one. That is well in progress, as well as our enhanced street sweeping program. You might not hear as much about, but very important to the city and our water quality. You'll be hearing from us a lot in the next year or so for our code and standards update and our TNP update, and we're in progress with our fish passage barrier assessment. All of these projects take three to six months of just planning to write the scope of work to advertise for the consultants. So I'm really, really thankful for the teams to be able to put these forward. We also, as always, respond to the unplanned, and often that pulls us away from our planned operations. So we had weeks and months-long repairs of the boardwalk on Southeast 24th Street, significant support, of course, during the solid waste collection strike earlier this year, extended response that went above our level of service for snow and ice, and we actually are still working on finishing up some, some operations from the bomb cycle in last fall. And wanted to also give a quick shout out to our development review engineering team. They completely overhauled our right-of-way permitting process, which was also unplanned this year. That took a lot of hours. Oh, sorry. So some of our operations work items that align with our council goals, the fish passage barrier assessment that I was just speaking to had a slight adjustment in schedule due to staffing and just working on the important work I was just talking about and refining the scope. So that'll have about a three, three-month delay in terms of finishing the assessment, so, but it's well underway. Our storm and surface water comprehensive plan update is not a requirement, but something that the city chooses to do. It is above and beyond our regulatory requirements. It's a guide for us. It complements, in a way, the city's comprehensive plan. We're planning on starting that this year due to vacancies. We're waiting until those positions are filled for both that and the basin plan, the next basin plan, the Panhandle basin plan, as well as developing land acquisition criteria for stormwater. The other thing that is delayed, which is near and dear to my heart, is our American Public Works Association accreditation. That's a national accreditation. It takes two to three years. We were hoping to get that started this year, but we're going to shift that into the next biennium due to the other projects I just mentioned. Any questions on some of these?
Council?
Yeah, sorry, just to make sure I heard you. The APWA accreditation has moved to the 27, 28 biennium now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our operations continue.
Actually, I had a couple of quick questions. It had to do with actually the accreditation. The advantage to that is what? Does that help you attract?
In a way, it is a very hard accreditation to get. So some of our peers are working on it. Redmond's working on it right now. I forgot the number of agencies that have achieved that. Either an entire department can, or like Bellevue, Bellevue's Transportation Department, Utility Department are accredited separately. It does help with recruitment and retaining staff. I would say the biggest thing for it is it focuses a department's work plan in one direction, and it's very process and policy heavy. So it really creates a lot of consistency. And for departments that have operations and inspections and planning and policy work, it's a key accreditation to have.
And what is enhanced street sweeping?
Great question. You're going to hear more about it soon.
Oh, I will? Okay, if I can answer, you can answer later.
This year, sorry, not this. Enhanced sweeping, we received a grant from the Department of Ecology to purchase the city's first street sweeper. Enhanced street sweeping is looking at water quality data such as phosphorus and targeting specific areas that have higher pollutant loadings to concentrate enhanced sweeping that we will be performing in-house in addition to the contracted services that meet our regulatory requirements.
Okay, and my final question has to do with our stormwater management, well, our stringent guidelines that we, that we've established, because to some extent, where would the monitoring of that go in this plan? So that I understand that as we've just put in this new ordinance that's very strict, to understand, you know, what the impact is of this, is this something that's covered that's in process or not started?
For the street sweeping plan?
No, I'm so sorry about the, the stormwater treatment.
Comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
That is an existing plan. The last one that was completed by the city was 2016. It was very well done. It outlines goals and implementation strategies specific to the utility. It really feeds on the North Star document, of course, is the city's comprehensive plan. This is just one that complements it, similar to the TNP. It's just not adopted by reference. Most cities update theirs every eight to 10 years.
Okay.
So we're about due, and they typically following that as a, as a rate study, following that, because sometimes you're setting up new projects or new policy work in that plan. Having that plan does not necessarily affect our, what we have to do for the Department of Ecology. So we don't have to have one, but most cities do.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. And this one might be partially for the city manager as well, sort of retroactive. So for all the projects that are, where we've had to adjust the schedules or they're delayed, where can we see sort of that next level of detail to understand, like what those adjustments are and maybe how that affects other things, right? And again, just to be clear, this happens all the time, right? I mean, we do our best to plan and, you know, best laid plans of mice and men and all that kind of stuff. But it just would be really helpful for us to kind of have an overview for all the departments of, you know, here's what we set out to do, here's where we are with each of them, and then to get that summary before we have to approve the mid-by of where are we with achieving some of our goals, right? So that as we're making decisions to adjust and amend the budget, that we, we are making those decisions based on, you know, the goals that we sent out and really allocating the money either to the highest priority from our goals or for more efficiency, right? Where we may be trying to align projects to attain either resource or cost efficiencies.
Thank you, Councilmember. Appreciate the question. I think what we are trying to do with what you're seeing here is to get at that work plan item. And recall, these are just the, the bigger projects that we do. This doesn't reflect our day-to-day or some of the smaller projects. These are bigger profile, bigger cost items. As you look at the things that are delayed, we are always evaluating and trying to stay with the highest priority components within different pieces of the work plan. This is a conglomeration of both stormwater and other public works items, as you will note. And so it's a, it's a mix, if you will. And so some of these pieces are, we are doing and assessing what is a higher priority based on direction we've already received from council. And so we're always sort of, to Audrey's point, staying with that North Star of what direction do we already have when these decisions are made. Some of these are reflective of things have changed, and I think you saw that on the first slide that Vicky showed. It's a mix of items. I would say if you have further questions about those, we're happy to respond to those. But for the most part, we are doing, and that's why we're bringing them to you all, is to say that some of these, whether they're delayed for reasons of, you know, time or money or whatever, that we're then coming back in terms of the adjustments to say, this is our transparency piece as well, to say, this became a higher priority. Things that we didn't plan on, and you'll hear more about this, for instance, on Building 120, that was not in the, in the work plan when we were putting it together for the biennium, but it's something that has come up and that has become a priority, if you will. And so this is the, sort of the, excuse me, higher level version of that.
No, and I love this. And again, not being critical, I think this is amazing, but I think it would be helpful for us to have, before we're making the financial decisions, to make those adjustments, and maybe even more so with any amendments we need to make, is to see the entirety of the work plan and to understand where you made those, not just for us, but for the public, to see where you did have to make those choices, right? Building 120 is a perfect example where, you know, we didn't know Central Washington was going to terminate their lease early when we put this plan and this budget together. Now that that kind of, that gift, if you will, that opportunity has arisen, and I think the whole community agrees that that's a higher priority, to be able to share, hey, because of this, these are the things that were pushed out, so that we can all see it and we can all agree. Because, you know, yes, we've given you direction, but to really see it, to say, here's the choices that we made, I think that's really important. And I think getting that communication out as part of that budget update is equally as important, so people understand. You guys have done all the work. You know it. And it's not that we don't trust you. It's more that we want to be able to share that goodness with the community, because there are often questions about that, like, how did you make that decision? Or what did you trade off? So I think that would be great. And to really be able to show, hey, these things weren't delayed just because, you know, Audrey was sitting around, you know, hanging out drinking tea in the afternoon. I think it's really important to be able to show, these are the things that came up and pushed it out.
Sure, I appreciate that. And just to be clear, I would say that the bulk of these are not so linear as to say, we stopped doing this so that we could do that. And I think that's the piece just for overall is, these, the things that have been delayed are for a variety of reasons, but they're, it's not a one-to-one, if that makes sense.
Sure, totally, totally. Thank you.
Okay, more operational work plan. So I spoke to quite a few of these already, but I'll start at the top here. Our franchise program review is in progress. We just adjusted the schedule a little bit as we were waiting to onboard our new city engineer. So she's leading this effort along with finance and our legal team. We've made a lot of great progress. We're just not quite at the level that we were hoping to be by the end of the second quarter. So that work will continue throughout this year and really ongoing as we work with different franchisees for their renewals and potentially new agreements. Most of the other projects I spoke when we were kind of launching our presentation, but all of these are adjusted in their schedule. The transportation master plan update, the transit enhancement program update, and the right-of-way code update, we're all waiting in part for, again, staff to be here to lead those efforts. So our fantastic senior transportation planner and city engineer, they're co-managing many of these projects. We needed to have the staff in, in those seats to be able to work on those. And another thing too, is as we were putting together the scope, it took us much longer when we were putting together the scopes, because the more we dug, the more we found we wanted to do more with each one of these, these plans. So I'm very excited to be kicking these off very shortly, and it'll take much longer to get through our code and standards update. We are planning to complete that work hopefully at this time next year, October, December next year.
Really quick, if I could just add on just a little bit to that, and this was part of a conversation that was, we had today, is we are also spending a little more time on some of, some of these bigger projects than we had intended. That's a positive for us to work through and for council to work through, but this is also some of the same people that are then going to be doing this other work. And so we very much appreciate the ongoing dialogue with council on things like the Solley Corridor project, but that has taken much more of a timeframe than we had originally anticipated. And so again, some of these things are getting bumped as a result.
Thank you, Scott. And the code update and standards update will have much more policy decisions that we'll bring, be bringing back to council throughout next year. So originally, we were planning on doing some, some light updates of some of our texts and our engineering details. And like I said, the more that we, we reviewed, the more we needed to really focus on some policy level decisions as well. Our ITS, our Intelligent Transportation Systems Master Plan will be delayed again due to vacancies. We need to have the team here both to be able to do the field operations as well as to work on these plans, so that'll be delayed. Likely will not be starting until Q4 next year or 2027. I'm sorry, can you repeat that last part? Likely will not be starting until Q4 of 2026 or early 2027. That is also, so this team? No, there's a trick to this. Okay, all right. That same team will be focusing a lot of their efforts on the streetlight strategic plan, which again, we decided to, after reviewing some of the details, will have much more of a scope. And it'll also, all of these plans will be overlapping quite a bit throughout 2026. So that was another need, as we were sitting down with all these project teams, recognizing the amount of collaboration needs to happen between all of these projects and plans. I think that, oh, and then the signal cabinet upgrades again due to staffing, those are in, in progress, but that takes a lot of staff resources. Usually, it's a three-to-six monthly time plus for signal cabinets, plus the coordination with police and King County to install. So those are on hold, with the exception of the new upgraded cabinet on Lewis Thompson Road as part of that project. Any questions on this slide?
First is Councilmember Stewart, and then Deputy Mayor Lamb.
Yeah, two questions. One is a little bit super tactical, but you mentioned the bike and ped plan will be coming back next week. When will we get to see, like, answers to our questions and any adjustments that may have been made based on our feedback?
Great question. We should be able to provide the Q and A on Friday. So a lot of our team is actually attending a Public Works Conference this week as well. So we are just finalizing some of our documents. They'll be published with a packet and updated on our website.
Okay. And I'm assuming there are some adjustments to the plan based on feedback? Okay, great. And then for the ITS master plan, does that delay us being able to improve? Because I know, again, being able to have the coordinated signals can do a lot to improve traffic flow. Not having this master plan, does that delay some of our ability to coordinate that, particularly with our neighboring jurisdictions?
Not as much. We coordinate with them very frequently. We just wanted to have a strategic plan in place to look at where, to help us inform where we should be investing in new infrastructure.
Okay.
So that's what this plan would be informing.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
I was just going to ask if the intelligent transportation system, does that affect the traffic cameras that we're trying to implement, like the rest of them?
This would be, no, those can be operated through a different, we're looking at some different software to be able to install those. So this would be focusing more on the actual installation of potentially new fiber or different things if we wanted to look at that for our cameras long-term wise. But we have some other solutions that we're looking at in the interim.
Okay, thanks.
And Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, the, you mentioned a couple of staffing positions that had to be filled. I think I got one of them down, but could you repeat those for me?
Sure. The city engineer, as well as the senior transportation planner.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So for operations, we do not have any amendments, both in general fund or in 408, our stormwater operations fund. We will have some adjustments for all of the plans that I mentioned that we expanded the scope. You'll see some of those contracts, I believe, are coming to council on the 21st of October or the 1st November meeting for approval. The scopes are very well-written. They're very detailed. You'll see the, the costs, the dollars associated with those expanded scopes. We are proposing to offset those from both staff savings and some of the other projects that are not able to move forward at this time. Any questions on this? Okay. Okay. Capital, so a few highlights. Again, this is, it's hard to fit everything in one slide, but Lewis Thompson Road Tight Line Project has gone beautifully, knock on wood, very few change orders, and really stayed very closely aligned with its budget and schedule. Most of the features will be able to be operational by the public in November. We will not be able to get final lift on the asphalt until early next year, just to the quality of the asphalt that would be, is really diminished in, in November due to the weather. So most other features will be, like I said, operational in November. It was a huge project with a 15-month building window, and we really just had a few weeks of delay. So very successful there. I'm very excited to finish that. And we also were able to deliver all of the APA barrier removal projects on time and on budget this year, as well as our overlays Beaver Lake Drive. on budget this year, as well as our overlays Beaver Lake Drive. Looks amazing. Again, we already spoke about Sahali Corridor Plan, but significant progress with that, as well as all of the monitoring devices for the landslides have been successfully installed and we're capturing some baseline data, so that's been great to have. The alternatives analysis was completed for 212. I know some of the projects, one of the projects in the Bike and Ped Plan proposes to widen that, but that alternatives analysis was really, will be helpful in for future projects as we consider potential projects out there. Thankfully, that section of road is not having the settlement issues quite as fast as we thought it was, so that's great, but we'll continue to monitor that. And we were also able to make substantial project progress on our alternatives analysis for the East Lake Sammamish Parkway Road Stabilization Project. And we are very close to reaching final design for George Davis Fish Passage and Storm Improvement Project, as well as Lori Estates Outfall Diversion and many of our stormwater facility retrofit projects.
Deputy Mary Lamb.
I just heard a question on the Lewis Tight Line project. So with the delay in paving, does that mean it remains one lane uphill through the rest of the year?
No, the the one-way closure is still set to end at the end of October. We just won't have, there'll be a little bit of a lip between the gutter line and the road. You'll often see that in developments that are going in, it just won't have the top layer of asphalt. So temporary striping will be in the sidewalk should be open. We are assessing, I don't know if we'll be able to open the bike lanes, so we're assessing that right now.
Oh, that sounds good. Thanks.
So our retrofit program, there is three, three different projects that, there's actually 20 different projects in that program, but there's three that are up here. We've made a lot of progress on all of those projects. There was an adjustment to schedule on some of those, just as really as we took another look at how we want to score projects and implement projects going forward. We've worked a lot with ecology. These projects do fulfill some of our stormwater regulations, reporting requirements with ecology, and we're now looking at those with a little bit different lens in terms of how many impervious acres, for example, of runoff will each project be treating. We will be able to complete final design and move forward with construction for those three next summer. It's going to be a busy construction summer. As well as Lori Estates Outfall Diversion is hitting final design in the next month, and that'll go forward to construction as well. Again, had an adjustment in its schedule as well. Hazel Wolf Culvert also had an adjustment in its schedule. We are pausing that project at 30% design due to a variety of factors. One is just vacancies with staff levels, but also some of the things that we were looking at downstream could be further impacting, so it would be greatly expanding the scope for that project. So we're going to hold that project at 30% design. It will be evaluated later. The Zaccus Creek, East Lake Sammamish Parkway Culvert Maintenance, good news to share. We can remove that for our work plan right now. That is performing well, and we don't need to do the maintenance that we were planning on on having to do. And our Southeast 24th Street Wetland Bio Retention Project is delayed so that we can time that project with some of the other projects you'll see on 24th Street in a few slides from now, so that hopefully we can go to construction at the same time for that that section of Southeast 24th. The other two projects listed here, the Ditch of Olgin and Laughing Jacobs Creeps have been removed from the work plan as we evaluated the solutions would need to occur on private property, so we're no longer moving forward with those particular projects. Any questions on these? Okay. The slide has primarily transportation capital projects. Excuse me, the sidewalk program is, has a slight adjustment. We are set to go to full construction next year, but we want to bring bring forward the project list. You'll see that in November with the Six Year CIP. Lewis Thompson Road Tight Line, we already discussed, had a slight adjustment in its schedule. Issaquah Falls City Road Flood Mitigation Project is actually in progress, on target, but we are holding that project as well at 30% design so we can propose to reallocate funding and resources to some rehabilitation projects that you'll see in a few slides, and you'll have more details in November. Sahali Way, slight adjustment there for a quarter as we finalize the plan with city council. Any questions on these projects? So very similar to the last slide, we do not have any amendments, but a handful of adjustments. As I mentioned, we are proposing to pause Issaquah Falls City Road at 30% design. It's a great place to pause a project if you have to pause one. And we also completed the alternatives analysis for the flood mitigation project. We are now looking at potentially, if we need to do that project going forward, it would be slated for the next biennium. You'll see additional details in November with the Six Year CIP, but we are proposing a new project category. It focuses on asset rehabilitation to take care of some of the assets that we have, roadways that are settling a little bit. As you are aware, we have an existing road stabilization project on East Lake Sammamish Parkway. That project is slight delay due to being able to bring on a consultant onboard. We had to advertise twice. Consultants onboard project is doing great, and it should, we should in 2025, being able to reach the 30% design milestone for that project. However, an additional section of road is also settling, so we are proposing to add that as Phase B. And both projects would complete full design by the end of 2026 with either a phase construction start or full construction in 2027. We will be adding two new projects, again, some settlement issues we've been monitoring. One is a street settlement repair, so we'll go into preliminary engineering and design and then rehabilitating the boardwalk. The repairs that we were able to complete by the crew were temporary in nature, but the entire boardwalk needs to be reevaluated and likely replaced. Questions on this?
Okay. Audrey, I have one quick question. It has to do with the Sixth Street. I want to make sure that I understand. This is a phased project, isn't that correct?
Correct.
So we're only talking about Phase 1, is that right?
Phase 1. For Sixth Street or?
Yeah, for Sixth Street.
Yes.
Okay, great. That's what I wanted to know.
And that's on target.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, no, go ahead. You can finish.
It's okay. I can go by. This is good news to share. We have received additional funding for George Davis Project, so very excited to, that we can receive additional funding for the capital, or, I'm sorry, for the construction phase of that project. Again, we'll also need to be, as we discussed, I believe, last month with you, we'll need to also be adjusting the expenditure side as as construction estimates have increased as well. There are not any adjustments proposed with any of the other changes to the stormwater projects. We're just, I'm sorry, amendments proposed. We are simply adjusting some of the project level information and dollars allocated to those projects. As I mentioned, we are reevaluating the retrofit program criteria and have several in design phase ready to go to be bundled for construction phase. And I believe I already spoke to any, all of these others, but happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so on the work plan, there were like three projects that we removed for various reasons. So I'm a little bit surprised that there's not an amendment to the budget, just because capital projects are often not just, you know, consultant and staff time, but other, you know, actual building time. So can you talk a little bit more about like why these did not have a more positive effect on our budget if these projects were removed?
Well, the good news is, is we'll need those dollars for some of our other projects. So Lori Estates, for example, will be several hundred thousand dollars more. George Davis will be several million dollars more than first plan, so some of that, those dollars would be reallocated to those projects.
Okay, so those were listed in the adjustments piece then? Okay. So we'll just see the detail later. That's why we're just not seeing them.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, council. I'm going to hand it to.
Excuse me, one more.
Oh, sure.
Sorry.
Councilmember Tree.
So what about the worst road in the city? What's happening with that? I thought we'd budgeted for that to be already paved and redone, so. And so is that not going to be done for another two years? What's?
That's included in the pavement reconstruction or pavement management program in the 340 Fund, and we are considering that project as well as citywide as we're currently scanning our roads so that we can have, we need a little bit of policy direction for application of those projects as well.
So that's going to fall under to the pavement plan? That's going to come up next on the agenda?
The pavement plan will inform some of the 2026 work as well as well beyond that.
Thanks.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager. I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks and Recreation. For our department, we, I'm going to be presenting operations and capital together. It's fairly simple. So the highlights for this year, one big accomplishment was the adoption of the city's first art strategic plan. Several of our projects this year are in the design and permitting phases, and one of them, as you know, we schedule and budget for the replacement of artificial turf every eight to 10 years. The last time we replaced the turf at East Lake Community Fields 1 and 2 was 2016. So this year, we did a GMAX test, and that is a shock absorption test, and the results came out favorable, and so we are able to move this turf replacement to next year. So while the project is delayed, it's for a good reason, and there are some cost savings as a result of that. The Evans Creek Preserve Trails, just for context, the, we are working on connecting the Williams Gas Line Trails to Evans Creek Preserve, and it is a two-part project. One part is within city limits, and in a couple of weeks, Washington Trails Association, with the help of some wonderful volunteers, many of them Sammamish residents, will be completing a trail loop, and then we will have to do some restoration planting. And then we'll have to come back and make the final connection to Evans Creek Preserve, and that portion is in unincorporated King County, and we have to go through the permitting process with the county, and it's going to take a lot longer. Other than that, you saw that we did a resealing and restriping of parking areas in our campus here, as well as at our Maintenance and Operations Center. We have had some significant additions to our work plan. One of the biggest impacts was the Bomb Cyclone. We are still working on the repairs to the damage to the roof at the Beaver Lake Pavilion. And throughout this year, maintenance team has had to go through our parks and get additional trees assessed and remove hazardous trees and brush in all our parks, and this has taken a significant amount of resources. And lastly, we've had to transition building 120 to the city very quickly when Central Washington University vacated the facility, and we are now also embarking on a feasibility study that I will go over in detail on another slide. Here are some programming highlights. We've had another great year. We've had 20-plus successful events, including a few to come, and that includes Earth Day, Rigger Palooza, Fort on the Plateau, and we will do Frosty Fest and a Halloween event as well later in the year. We've had our Kids First Known Series and all our summer concerts. We have a handful of events that Arts Commission funds, and that includes Shakespeare in the Park and Sunset with Symphony, and this year, we also did two movies on the Plaza. We have a handful of partnership events such as the Luna New Year and Outdoor Storytime with the King County Library, free yoga, and a handful of summer camps. Our Restoration Specialist holds multiple restoration events with the help of our Plant Stewards and our Stormwater Stewards, and alongside with our volunteer coordinator, who also oversees the Community Garden Adopt a Road Program, Adopt a Pond Program. Lifeguarding, every year that we complete a year without any major incidents, we are very relieved, and this year has been the same. And all this work goes on alongside our regular priority scheduling of our 18 athletic fields, our picnic shelters, Beaver Lake Lodge, and now building 120. Any questions?
Just well done.
Thank you.
That's a lot. Well done. And I know you're a small but mighty team, so well done.
Thank you. So here is a status of all the projects. We are generally staying in the green. It is hard. Some of our projects are taking longer for permitting, and we have staff vacancies as well. So, but most of them have started, or if they haven't, we think we can complete them on target. The ones that are taking longer for permitting are Fire Station 83 and the East Sammamish Park Baseball Fields. And with that project, once we couldn't accomplish it this year, we want to allow another baseball season to occur next year, and then we will start construction right after that season. I already covered the synthetic field replacement and Evans Creek Preserve. The Sammamish Commons Trail Connection, land acquisition, always a little delicate. This is to make the trail connection from the Commons to Beaton Hill Park. And so we have started a communication with the neighbors, but we do have to allow them time to feel comfortable for us to take the next step. Any questions?
Deputy Mary Lamb.
What is in the Beaton Hill Park soft opening? Is it the entire park? I'm not clear what that includes.
Beaton Hill Park soft opening? So this one was actually, Beaton Hill Park soft opening included getting the, getting a trail through the areas that are outside all the active areas that are planned for the park. So there is, there's a densely treed area and wetlands, and we're able to make a small trail through that section. And so that's what we'll attempt to do first. The rest of it will have to be designed, permitted, and bid out to contractors. Yep. All right, building 120. Let me just move to this. All right, so we, staff have put together requests for qualifications, and we are in the process of selecting a consultant for a feasibility study and a community planning effort, and this is to determine the long-term use of the facility. We plan to complete this work in three phases with touchpoints with council at every phase. The first phase will be a building and site evaluation where we will determine if the building is physically and operationally suitable for programming. And as part of that, we will do a building analysis and ADA code review, wetland delineation, et cetera. We'll bring all those findings back to council and determine next steps before launching an extensive community engagement process. And we would, at that point, be determining if we are gathering options for programming of your current building, or if we are going to look at reviewing options for the whole site itself. Once we gather that information from the community, and we've heard from council as to what you would like to see for this building and site, then we will start Phase 3, which will be basically sketching up concept options for the site, trying to understand capital costs and operation costs and funding strategies as needed. If all goes according to plan, we hope to complete this effort in about a year. Any questions?
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, Scott, when, when we first found out about Central Washington terminating their lease kind of abruptly, you had brought forward sort of a, an immediate sort of short-term, you know, that we'd have sort of a short-term plan, a midterm, and then a longer-term plan. Are we still going to see some of that? Because it sounds like it'll be a year, which makes sense to kind of come up with sort of what that long-term plan is, but what will we do in between? Because I'm assuming it'll be a year to determine the long-term plan, but to implement said plan will be lots more than a year, so, especially depending on what that is.
Right, so you'll hear a little bit more about.
building, just to get it to, well, I think what I would commonly term operationally functional, which it is not now. I think we've shared some of this, but from a safety perspective, there's no cameras on site. I think we need to have those. The building doesn't have furniture at the moment. So there are some functional pieces that are not an inconsequential dollar amount that, again, we're looking for council direction on making those investments. And then as we start to learn more, council will be able to have a better sense of what's possible as we go through the rest of the process. And again, those decision gates that Anjali was talking about in sort of the three phases, with each one of those, you'll have more of an information set, and we'll be able to better talk about what options are available or not. I think one of the pieces that I, that I do want to highlight is there was a, the use of the building was under a zoning for a higher education facility, and that's different than what we would be using it for. So we have a year to, to basically put in regular zoning in place. And with that comes, what requirements do we have to meet under that regular zoning, which we still need to work through that, and then what changes need to be made accordingly? So there are some procedural steps that are very functional that will go hand in hand as we get through some of these gates of the feasibility. Hopefully, well, those in combined will allow us to make better informed decisions at that point in time. So there is still sort of that, the very near term was, what do we do? Do, you know, do we need to change the locks? The answer was yes. And then, you know, what happens next? And so that's kind of where we are at the moment. And then that long-term plan really is, you know, that's what that feasibility assessment will really tell us what the long-term map is. And I believe that we will get to the point of also saying, even if that's the long-term plan, we know what is, what is possible and feasible between here and there. And then we'd be able to talk about what that looks like, too. Just as council knows, there is a lot of interest in the building. And as council also knows, we cannot accommodate everybody in any way, shape, or form just at face level. And so we have to find, figure out what, where the community council want to go, and then how to sift through all of that, and then figure out what's feasible, financially feasible, and then practical. So we have a lot of work ahead of us, but I think we're excited about the opportunity.
Excellent. And thank you, Anjali and your staff, for being able to pivot so quickly on such a hot item. Because again, I think that it really kind of came up quickly and as a surprise, and you guys already had a lot of unexpected work on your plate, so appreciate that.
Thank you. So Scott covered some of this, and I'll just summarize it in this slide, that earlier this year, we came to council and shared that there were some immediate steps that we needed to start taking as this building was transferred to the city. The first step was securing the building, and we have completed rekeying the building. However, we have yet to work on security cameras for the safety of visitors and staff and just everyone in the building. We've also seen some transition expenditures, and I'm just going to go through them, because then you will see them at the top of the slide. They do add up quickly. We've been working with our IT department, and Jim's team has been really great about also pivoting and helping us. We haven't done this alone. And getting the network connections going, as well as audio and video in the select rooms that are being used right now. We've had to purchase some furniture. Again, we've limited to the rooms that are being used for the tutoring classes. We've added storage racks in one of the classrooms and repurposed that for record storage that you heard about in one of your recent council meetings. A monument sign went up in short order. One of our staff designed that. We've had to assume the utility bills, so the city has to now pay for utility bills, and those have added to our costs. At some point, we'll paint the building where you won't see all that wallpaper with the brick that is inside. And one of the challenging things has been to add facility monitors at short notice, because they are not permanent staff, and they sometimes don't show up. So we are doing the best we can. Any questions? With the termination of the city's lease agreement with the Sammish Heritage Society, the Riad House is now the responsibility of the city. And this is also an addition to the work plan. We are grateful to the Heritage Society for their years of work on renovating the house. As soon as staff have capacity, we will have to work to compile all the remaining work and bid that out. We know that there's some interior work, some plumbing and electric work, and our allowance that we are asking for at this time is about $200,000. That will also include some form of a security alarm system for the house. And finally, when the work is done, we will need some resources to staff the building when we need to open it up to the public, and also some policies in place. Any questions?
I have one about the Reed House. Do we have an intent for the house? Are we hoping that it's an event center or a meeting space or?
Yeah, that is a great question. So it's a fairly small house, if you've been inside. The Heritage Society obtained multiple grants to renovate the house, and was, one of the requirements is that we will have some form of a museum. And so one of the rooms at the lower level to the side, we will be putting up some artifacts and information, and that will serve as the museum. And then the main area of the house is going to be available for like smaller HOA meetings, book clubs, just anything that will fit in that amount of space. But again, we will need rental policies, and we'll come to council with that, so you will have the ability to weigh in. We also have a partnership with the Sammish Botanic Garden Society, and they have expressed interest to be able to use the house. It is premature to enter into a conversation with them, but it could serve as a potential win-win if we need to keep the house open for the museum, and we have someone in the building. It might just work out. Again, we'll come back to council for more conversations.
And I'm assuming the upstairs isn't available because it can't be ADA?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And this is the last slide that summarizes.
It's actually Councilmember Gupta has a question. Sorry, Fund 302, is that just the Parks CIP fund?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
So this slide summarizes the budget amendments and the budget adjustments. And one of the amendments will be to add the $200,000 in the Parks CIP, the 302 Fund, for the Riad House renovations. The other one is a little over $100,000 that we are spending to repair the Beaver Lake Pavilion roof. However, we hope to get reimbursed for most of that by insurance. And then the budget adjustment is all the costs associated with both the transition costs and the feasibility study for Building 120. And that is going to come out, is it, it's an adjustment, not an amendment, and it's going to come out of the savings in the general fund. If your council has no questions, I will hand it over to Jim in IT.
I have a question before Jim starts. Jim, why do you go after parks? Do you not know better than to try to go before parks?
Or public works as well. I'm last because it's going to be quick. Yep, very much so. A couple of highlights. The SharePoint migration's been going well. We've got three departments that are completed already and three that are in flight. The last one, which is Parks, doesn't get underway until December timeframe, and then we'll wrap things up mid-year or so of '26. The phone system, migration from legacy phone into a teams-integrated solution. And we are moving forward with it. We had a little bit of a slow start. We had some contracting challenges early on, and we didn't meet the deadline before the August break. So then we lost that month before we could come back for that. The permitting system replacement, we have not started that in Q3, which is where we're at right now. And the biggest reason is simply we want to ensure that we have a very good running start for the implementation of the financial system for Vicki and company. And so we're holding back because we just don't have the bandwidth to, to do two significantly large projects. The phone system upgrade, it does actually say Q3, '25. It's going to be Q4, so. And the SharePoint migration. And lastly, no amendments and no adjustments. We're done. Yeah, pretty quick. Yes, yes.
I have a question about the permitting system. In terms of our expectations about how this is actually going to go, it is so complicated. It's not off the shelf.
Um.
Exactly.
Yes, it can be mostly off the shelf. So the strategy is to look at internal system capabilities first. We have two in-house enterprise systems that have the potential, and then we'll reevaluate based on the requirements coming out of community development.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, if there are no further questions, just want to kind of recap next steps. So the next, tonight concludes the work plan updates for all departments, as well as kind of a preview to the budget and amendments and adjustments. So at our next meeting, October 21st, there'll be two things. We're going to do a financial policy overview. You'll have a chance to weigh in on what those policies look like. And also, Eastside Fire and Rescue will be here to give a presentation on their proposed fire fees. November 5th kicks off a lot of financial legislation. So we do have public hearings for the mid biennial budget amendments and adjustments, the capital improvement plan, as well as the 2026 property tax levy. And then we'll be through resolution, the fee schedule and salary schedule, and then also the financial policies based on feedback we receive from the 21st, with the plan on adoption of all of these items on November 18th. Any other questions?
It appears not, but thank you so much for the presentation. It really helps ground us.
Thank you.
We'll be moving next into the next presentation, or discussion, rather, and it will be on pavement management strategic plan update, and it will be with Audrey and Jen.
Thank you, Mayor. Jen will be joining me remotely, so she should be joining in just a few minutes. She is actually attending the Public Works Conference, so thank you, Jen, for accommodating this as well. For the record, Audrey Sarsky, Public Works街道, thank you, council. We are excited to present, this is just an update and a check-in for the project. As you just heard, it is a little bit delayed as we're working through the project. And so really happy to present our accomplishments to date and as well as where we're headed over the next few months with the project. Before we get going, I also wanted to give a quick shout-out to the project team. This is a very different approach to something that is traditionally very technical in nature, so really wanted to thank Genevieve Ribanelle. She's the management analyst that is co-managing this project with one of our associate engineers, Joe Dapsovich. He's not able to join us this evening, but really wanted to thank the team as well as, this is a project that has been being worked on as a pilot with the racial equity team. So thank you very much for the racial equity team and their input and work on this, this plan as well. So we'll walk through how this is tied into some of the bigger picture items that we were just discussing, as well as where we are to date and a few next steps. We've been through most of these already. As I mentioned in the last presentation, most of these items will overlap in one way or another, either through policies or details or both. An example of this is with our right-of-way code and standards update, we have policy work in some of those documents that affects pavement and vice versa. So that'll be, some of these projects will be talking to each other throughout this. These are not linear lines. There'll be a lot of collaboration along the way, but this is just meant to illustrate some of the timelines that's needed for some of these projects. Pavement management itself is very, it's a very systematic process. As I mentioned, very technical in nature. It always starts with capturing data. Now we do this with our trucks, and we use a lot of LiDAR data. After that data's collected, it then moves to a data management piece and modeling and analysis, and finally, that informs decision-makers. So hopefully, you recognize the pie chart on the right of your screens. I think we've managed to incorporate that into most of our presentations, but pavement management really starts with maintenance, and as we move into rehabilitating, in this case, our roadways and eventually replacing those, and we're always planning for the next project. So it really affects this entire pie chart on your right. Pavement management is critical to Sammish as most cities, as it typically incorporates. It's our biggest asset, and of course, we spend a lot of dollars to retain that asset in the condition that it's in. We have over 415 lane miles of publicly maintained roads. I think if you were to leave Sammish on a one-lane road, you could travel about somewhere in Southern Oregon. So just to give context for that, lifespan of roads typically range quite a bit, but your arterials will see a lesser lifespan just due to the loading on the arterials and, of course, the volume. So many of our arterials are also freight routes, so, and they are also typically serviced a little bit more during snow and ice. So they take a little bit more wear and tear. Those, those lifespans are quite a bit shorter than our local roads. With this plan, we're also looking at street selection for our maintenance and rehabilitation. Traditionally, that's always been based on the score, the condition score of the asset. This plan is proposing to do something else with the same outcome of having an extended life cycle for that pavement asset and to be optimizing our investment in our roadways. I believe we last presented this slide in April. Most of these pictures are our own roads and our crews working on our roads. We have annual maintenance programs that ranges from potlou repairs and Gap, and, I'm sorry, Gap-Massic, which is a new technology that's been a great way to be able to save some dollars. Traditional patching work and crack sealing. We traditionally bring in contractors to support our crews to do the crack sealing, but that's done every year. Our overlays are also done over, every year, our engineering team does the specifications and engineering details for that, and we bring in contractors to help overlay our new roads. And finally, when a road condition requires a new base, where we have to dig into the top layers of asphalt enough, it requires reconstruction of the roadway, that it requires much more design work and typically a lot longer to plan for that type of work. So pavement management history in Sammish just provides a little bit of a snapshot of the last 10 to 12 years. I will say, as the science and engineering changes, sometimes that can affect the score, so there's always a little bit of nuance to all of this. Our last data collection occurred five years ago. That's kind of the typical range that most cities collect data on their roadways. We used to use a software called Paver. We're actually transitioning with this contract to utilize Payment Express. It's a Trimble-owned company, which is also, Trimble also owns CityWorks, which is where our operational piece will live. So those two software systems will be able to talk to each other, so very excited to have our capital project and, and road collection data in one system that'll talk to the system that our crews use for the roads. With this plan, we'll also be looking at new methodologies and rehabilitation strategies. Previously, we have been fairly limited into what we utilize for our approaches to roadway restoration, so crack sealing, patching, and overlays for the most part. We don't typically look at slurry seals or microseals. We'd like to approach that again with this plan. It can save the city quite a bit of, of dollars. And finally, we'll be preparing some budgeting and prioritization in project execution. This gives a little bit of the history of pavement. What is also not shown here is the amount of new roads that may have been built or overlays that were completed by a developer that may help with the city's overall pavement management Finally, PCI is the pavement condition, excuse me, index. It's usually referred to as a, as a target goal in a, an adopted plan by, by city, and there's also an actual score. The PCI can be set citywide, it can be set by road classification. This is on a 0 to 100 score, with 100 being the best, for a brand-new road. We will have additional information for you as we have future presentations, but this kind of gives a quick glance at some of our neighboring jurisdictions and what their PCI is. At subsequent meetings, we will be asking council to select a goal for PCI, both citywide and then by road classification as well. Our current funding that supports the program comes from both our transportation fund, or our 340 fund. Currently, we have $1.8 million allocated to that. Those are dedicated to the road reconstruction projects, so when we have to completely dig up the base that supports the asphalt for the road, in some instances, it also requires funding from our stormwater capital fund as well. Our overlay program and our crack sealing is paid for through our street funds. Currently, we have $3.5 million allocated to that work. It's primarily overlay work. And finally, our general fund, we're paying for this plan. So, that's the professional engineering services, and this plan is about $200,000 to complete. So, as I mentioned earlier, this plan, of course, is like a spider web. It's connecting to many, many other plans. Some of those are, we have a five-year no-cut policy, so if a road is cut by either us or a utility provider, developer, they have to overlay that road, either half width or the full road, depending on what they have just done. That retains the integrity of that road. If we have just recently overlaid that, that requirement is in effect for five years. There's stormwater requirements. There are new requirements coming our way in 2027 that would require us to do a little bit more with stormwater, so we're looking at that with this plan as well. And ADA improvements are required, excuse me, when we are, I forgot the percentage, but when we're looking at different types of projects, we are required to go in and provide ADA requirements, new ramps, and make sure it all meets requirements ahead of the pavement scheduling. So, lots of planning work that goes into this. And of course, we're constantly coordinating with our neighboring jurisdictions for traffic control and different things, and utility companies prior to the work.
Audrey, would you like to answer questions now before you go to the project?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
I'm going to ask if there's some questions from council. Deputy Mayor Lam?
I just had a question on the PCI conditions compared to other cities, and I think you mentioned it, like, ours is really high, just because we're a young city, right? And a lot of the developments are newer, and so, those are newer roads, like, definitely, like, not over 30 years old, compared to, say, Issaquah and Redmond.
It's a combination of both new roads and the investment the city has historically made. Comparison, I've said at many other meetings, I don't know of another agency that has a score in the 80s.
Okay. It'll be interesting, I guess, when we try to set a new PCI score, because how do you decide what that number is? How do you lower it? Because the expectations, you know, when people are driving around, is the roads are what they are right now.
And this will be a policy decision. Of course, we'll have some recommendations, but we could consider a higher PCI for roads that are traveled a little bit more, so our priority routes, like, our snow priority routes, as well as that would usually aligns with our classification system as well.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I would actually, just historically, we've, the council has had these discussions, and I don't know if it was a policy, official policy decision, but the council did invest, you can see from the budgetary numbers, that in the past, they put a lot of money into some of these overlays, which isn't necessarily bad, but it is not sustainable under current budgetary conditions, which is the challenge. So, we spent a lot of money in some of those years. But, I have a really important question, and that is that you absolutely have to tell me what Gap Mastic is, because that just sounds so cool.
Sure. It's a neat product. I'll have to share some videos of when it's going in, but it's just a different way that we're able to repair the roads. I believe we utilized this primarily on 2/16, 17th, and 18th, before that was overlaid. It's more to purchase the asphalt, but the implementation of it requires a lot less resource, and it's been really neat for the crews to be able to install. I don't know, honestly, what the Gap Mastic, where the name comes from, but I can get back to you.
Well, it just goes to show you that product naming matters, because now I'm more interested.
Deputy Mayor Lam?
Sorry, I was just thinking about the PCI number. So, will we, how do we know, like, what a PCI 70 is?
We will have a lot of photos and maybe some videos. If council would like to take field trips, we're more than happy to take you on a field trip to go see what a roadway that has a 70 looks like, or just provide you a list of some of those roads. You know, when a road section is looked at, when you're driving over it at 35, 40 miles an hour, where you don't see the challenges that that road may be experiencing, when we overlay 228, that actually had a PCI of 57. And driving by it, probably doesn't look like it.
Okay, yeah. All right, thank you.
And my question, I think it might be your slide 9, but I'm not sure. But I was wondering if you could use that one, yes? In terms of expenditures, can we use this for trending at all?
I think so. If I recall, there was a little bit of change into how we looked at, how the industry and how we looked at PCI and the different tools that we are using. So, it is helpful, but it's also not, because some of the science changed a little bit.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions so far? Okay. Well, I'm going to turn it over to Jen.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. My name's Jen Ribanelle, and I'm going to walk you through our project update. So, the main components of the current project are the pavement condition assessment and the pavement management strategic plan. So, what is a pavement condition assessment and pavement management strategic plan? A pavement condition assessment is the physical assessment of the public streets in the city. So, our consultant, TransMap, as you can see on screen, uses LiDAR to assess the condition of our pavement. And LiDAR stands for Light Detection and Ranging. It's like a high-tech laser scanner, so it's mounted on a vehicle, like you can see on this truck or van. It drives down along the road, firing thousands of laser pulses every second, and these pulses bounce off the road's surface and create a super-detailed 3D image. So, from that image, computers can spot cracks, bumps, potholes, and even measure how smooth or rough the road is. This measurement is then used to calculate the pavement condition index score for all the public roads in the city. And as part of the pavement condition assessment, we are also working with TransMap to onboard the new GIS software that Audrey mentioned, called Pavement Express. So, we'll use that to track the condition and maintenance of our roads moving forward. And the pavement management strategic plan will be a five-year strategic plan that captures all the data from the physical assessment, along with everything else on this slide. And the aim of this plan is to be transparent to all the stakeholders of the pavement management program in the city in an accessible and easy-to-understand format. So, we've always had great technical plans for pavement management, but with this plan, we want to make sure that policy decisions are transparent and accessible to all members of the community. So, next slide. Thank you. So, this is our current project schedule. We are working on finalizing our street selection process right now, and up next for us is finalizing our community engagement strategy. So, we hope to have a draft strategic plan ready in January, and we are aiming for final plan completion in early 2026. Next slide, please. So, I mentioned, we are finalizing our street selection process. As part of this project, we took a new look at our scoring system used to prioritize the public streets in the city for maintenance and rehabilitation. So, right now, we're looking at a new system for street selection that introduces equity considerations into the process. So, the pavement condition index will still be the cornerstone of the street selection process. However, we're introducing a criticality matrix with equity considerations into the overall scoring and selection of streets. So, next slide, please. What is a criticality matrix? The criticality matrix, it's a tool, just to assist with the prioritization of streets during the selection process. So, when we combine the criticality matrix with a pavement condition index score for street selection, it will allow for decisions to be made, like, say, between two streets that have an equal PCI, but one street has a higher criticality matrix score. That would allow decisions to be made more easily when ranking the streets for maintenance. So, road class, high-use areas, and equity factors are the components of our criticality matrix. And you can see that there are numeric scores assigned to each category, which leads to an aggregate score that we can then use as part of the street selection process. Next slide, please. So, for road classification, you can see the principal arterials are in red, minor arterials are in blue, collector arterials are in green, and local roads are white. And as a reminder, we only treat and maintain public roads. Next slide, please. For high-use areas, we referred to the following categories: public schools, public parks, commercial areas, transit stops, and public buildings. So, if a road falls into one or more of these areas, that would garner a higher score in this category. And the colors are a little bit faint, but you can see, for example, 228 falls in every single one of these categories, so that would be a very high score. Next slide, please. So, this project was selected to pilot the racial equity toolkit, and we took incorporating equity into this project from the lens of multiple equity factors, not just racial demographics in the community. We really wanted to be intentional in our equity work and not just target race, but really look at race and other marginalized or underserved communities. So, to do that, we selected the following equity factors on screen by working with members of the racial equity team. And we thought that these four categories captured the intersection of race and other factors that could be leading to unequal representation, potentially, in the quality of pavement among these groups in the city. So, next slide, please. And how do we actually tie in equity to the scoring of pavement? We ended up treating it similarly to the high-use area scoring. So, each equity factor translates to a numeric score that can then be combined with the other criticality matrix categories to create an aggregate score. And also, similar to the high-use area scoring, streets where there are cross-sections of these groups would score higher. There was a lot of exploration and work done to get to this point, so I just want to give a huge kudos again, echoing Audrey to the project team, and also to the racial equity team members who helped us with this. We really couldn't have done this without their assistance. Next slide, please. And we are also working with the racial equity team to develop an intentional community outreach strategy for this work, and we'll have more to share with you next time. Next slide. So, just a quick recap, these are the upcoming items from the staff side, and then we will be returning to you for some policy decisions, such as PCI, later on. We will also bring a first draft of the strategic plan in January, and we hope for final review in early 2026. I think that's it, so thank you. Any questions?
Councilmember Gupta, or is it, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I love your new scoring methodology. I'd love to understand, so for the equity factor, is that an addition? So, it's just a point score that you add to the overall score, or is it a multiplier?
It's in addition to. So, the first thing that we look at is the score of the road itself. If it doesn't need any work, that's great. We'll put it on the list to review again in two years, but if it does, you know, then that's something that we would need help with selecting those roads.
Could we see that metric, the score, how the score, the different elements of the score? That was a great slide.
I forgot.
You have the power, Audrey.
Sorry, I forgot.
There we go. So, I guess the one thing that concerns me about this is that the equity factor and the high-use areas have a much lower impact on our principal arterials. And I'm wondering, like, does that kind of work out in the end, right? Like, or is their impact diminished when it's a principal arterial? Or because it's a principal arterial, it's going to end up at the top of the list anyway? Because like, I'm thinking about from an equity perspective around schools, and we do have a number of schools along 228. And so, I would want to make sure that, you know, as we look at things around there, that those are taken into account, because that's where you're going to get a lot of people, especially a lot of kids, who may have additional needs.
Absolutely. Our principal arterials will always score the highest. There are lifeline routes as well. And because we have so many schools in public areas along those routes, that would be, you know, another additive point to the point system here.
Okay. And when you guys do, like, your asset inventory to determine, like, what roads we're going to work on, like, this is where I start to think about sort of the intersectionality with other types of projects, right? Like, with ADA work, and maybe even stormwater work and all that kind of stuff. And our bike and ped plan, right? So, I think about the Beaver Lake, the picture of the Beaver Lake overlay, right? The Beaver Lake Drive overlay. That looks amazing. But Beaver Lake Drive is one of those roads that has no shoulder. So, when we were looking at the, doing that overlay, would it have made sense for us to also look at, was there an opportunity to potentially expand the pavement to create at least some sort of a shoulder along that roadway as we were doing that? Because that would certainly be less expensive to do that as we were doing the overlay, as opposed to doing it as a completely separate project. So, I'm just wondering if there's a plan, there's sort of a master plan of all the master plans, to really look at how we can look at these things and be so much more efficient when we're doing, especially for an overlay project, which is critical, but can be really expensive to be able to put all that together, just feels like a win, a big win for us.
Yeah, it's a great question. Jen, please chime in. So, I think the overarching thing would be our citywide capital improvement plan in terms of the capital projects, the operational pieces. We do think there's a lot of coordination work that just goes into an overlay. We're obviously planning for a construction phase, but we're coordinating with utilities if there's any developments that are in the queue. That team, the capital improvements team, also works with every division of Public Works with every project. Every division reviews every design milestone of every single project, so that hopefully we're not missing anything along the way. In addition to some of that work, we regularly meet to talk through how we can improve our operations. So, starting about a year ago, we camera all of our stormwater pipes a year to two years ahead of an overlay, so that we can hopefully be able to predict if that pipe has integrity issues or may fail. We don't want to replace the road a few years later. So, that's kind of some examples of what we're looking at.
Okay, because I know we, you, we, you all staff, has done a great job of coming up with scoring systems for all these projects. And that's all great, but to me, that's an input, not the final answer, because there does, I feel like, need to be that sort of human check on, again, as we're working on, you know, multimodal and looking at non-car-centric projects, that there are just so many opportunities. And same with, like, the ADA work. I just feel like there's just a lot of opportunity here for us to say, well, hey, this, you know, project for bike-ped was not as high on the list, but we have to do the overlay over here. So, can we combine those, even though this might have been a lower priority? Because overall, we're going to save a ton of money, and also inconvenience, right? We're only going to take that road out of commission one time, as opposed to twice. So, I would love to see how we can do more of that as we move forward.
Of course, we do a lot of that already. Our capital team works with our maintenance crews all the time.
We just want to see it then. We want to see more sausage making, that's all. Because I just, I just think that's, you know, Deputy Mayor Lam brought up, we are a newer city, so we have newer roads. That's not necessarily true. We're a newer city, but a lot of our roads are really old and not great, because we inherited them from unincorporated King County. And so, there's, again, more opportunity for us to improve. So, I just, I really want to see us looking at some of those, especially around some of this equity index stuff, right? Where, you know, can we improve the walkability or bikeability where people may not have cars to use all the time? So, anyway, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lam?
So, I really appreciated when I was going through the deck and seeing this pop up, because, you know, I was going through the earlier parts, just about, you know, the structure of the roads and stuff. And this actually really surprised me in a good way. I know that when we were working, you know, a couple of years ago now, adding DEIB to our work plan, and just on, like, how we, like, envisioned the city being, and I think for a lot of us, we were struggling how we would add this to the actual work that we're doing. And so, I think this is just great, that, you know, it's like a vision that we had, and it's kind of, you know, permeating through work now that we're doing. So, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a really neat... It's been a really neat process to be a part of, too, because we, at the end of the day, needed to have a data point that we could enter back in our database systems. But it's been a really neat process, and we hope to be able to utilize similar things in some of our other operational pieces, too. Thank you.
If I could jump in really quick as well, just wanted to give a call out that we did model the building of our criticality matrix after the city of San Diego. So we did speak with some of the city of San Diego staff because that was where our team saw the inspiration for building equity into this process and this project. So do just want to give them credit where credit is due there, that they definitely inspired this.
I have a different question, unless, Council, anyone else want to pop in? If not, my question is probably, it might be your slide 14, and you were going through the cracking potholes, running, running and so forth, revelling. It was the device or the truck that would go through. Do you have something like that for sidewalks?
No. That's interesting, though. No.
That's unfortunate, but that would be, it seems like that could be adaptive technology that...
It may be out there, and perhaps we're just not aware of it, but, or maybe not, maybe that's a great idea.
I think I have a business plan. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
There's got to be a way to make this work. Okay, very good. Well, thank you both for an informative presentation. We learn something new every time we take a look at this. So I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you very much. We will be moving into public comment. The public is welcome to attend city council meetings in person or at City Hall or virtually through Zoom. So we will take commenters in the room first and then move to Zoom.
Thank you. Just a little blip here and then my public comment. October is Down Syndrome Awareness Month. Children born with trisomy 21, also known as Down Syndrome, have three DNA on the 21st chromosome. It is completely random who the winning parents are, and nothing influences the random. They have not, they cannot have malicious intent, but they can guide us towards a better community, one that celebrates small wins, makes it okay to be proud of yourself, and to simply be happy for other people's happiness. We have several residents here in Sammamish who have Down Syndrome, and we are lucky to have them. Greetings. I am Gillian Wallace of the historic town of Inglewood, and we need a septic-to-septic replacement concierge, someone to guide and teach our historic community, those of us without the option to access sewer but still have to battle the system designed to be painful. I've heard it's only 40,000, so why doesn't everyone just do it? It's so easy to just pop the old one out and get a new one put in. But let me tell you this, it's not. I am terrified of the next storm that makes our trees sway. Outdated septic probably means outdated plumbing. So now we're redoing the bathrooms. Oops, we found rotting wood. Because if one part of the age system is failing, that leads towards the rest of the system probably being magically updated? Yeah, no. Oh, and we also can't live in a house without plumbing, correct? So now we look at one of the biggest septic replacement costs, finding suitable alternative housing in the area for your family for over a year. We are approaching the one-year anniversary of the bomb cyclone, the one that left houses cut in half. My neighbor's house is still frameworked with just a roof, unlivable. Do you know how difficult it is to find a single-story house rentable or purchased here in Sammamish? I spent three years to find my home because I really wanted to stay here in Sammamish. And now we have architects and geologists and coordinators to employ just to follow along the path that by design is to discourage people from swapping from septic to septic. Now we are easily leading into the $200,000 range, all because we want to stop pollutants from our five Kocany salmon streams along the west side of the city of Sammamish. One of these streams runs along our historic Platts border. Our neighborhood bobcat also lives down there. So again, we would like to request a septic-to-septic concierge, someone who can work with the King County, three water districts, and city permits to facilitate a timely outcome, someone who can teach our community how to correctly maintain our new septic symptoms. Because did you know that the internet is not always correct? Yeah, the research on this shit is crazy, so let's get our lake cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody that's in the room that wanted to give public comment that has not had an opportunity to sign up? If not, we will move to online.
Those who have pre-registered to provide online comment, please raise your hand if you'd like to give comment at this time. Mr. Stickney, when you're ready.
Good evening, City Council, Paul Stickney. And let's go M's the next few days, and there's no game on, so I can't turn into a sports announcer again. You know, housing is out there everywhere in social media, mostly focused on town center, but it's really about housing. And a real solution is to plan for both sets of housing growth targets. Regional, external, we have planned for. Local, internal, we have not. You know, our 2100 target that the city negotiated was about one-third for our city as a regional population cohort, and I agree with keeping that smaller. Regional growth contemplates, as we all know, both people moving to the state as forecasted by the Office of Financial Management and birth and death rates. It does not contemplate internal needs at a local level. Internal housing shortage needs are determined by contrasting current housing supplies with local economic, demographic, and workforce housing needs over time. Our city has a notable shortage of affordable housing, at least twice as much as our current growth target. Our city has even larger shortages of market rate housing from 500 to a million four at a minimum four times our target. Different and diverse housing, I'll spit out the S, shortages that I call CHI, citywide housing imbalance, can be met by adding market rate target to the comp plan, which is not a growth target. What happens if we optimally alleviate CHI, market rate gap shortages, primarily in centers? We can resolve the city operating fiscal imbalance with sustainable added revenues of 15 million a year or more. We can expedite phasing out and then eliminating the recently passed 6% utility tax, raise capital for desired capital projects one-time and recurring, provide residents variety of housing options to stay for life, many saving 25,000 a year or more, yield balanced, sustainable housing for future generations, and a continued rich social fabric. Lower per-unit car trips and students to about a quarter of new homes, and improve community character enable a host of environmental advancements. Appreciate the chance to speak.
Thank you.
We did have two other pre-registered public commenters, so if you would like... Okay, it looks like that's all for public comment tonight.
Thank you very much. So now it's time for council reports, city manager reports. But your city manager, do you have a report for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a very brief one, and it was already mentioned earlier, but we received a grant award for George Davis Creek Fish Passage and Stormwater Improvement Project. We were awarded $750,000 from the King County Flood Control District, and so that will help offset some of the cost increases for that project, so we're very excited about that.
We're all very excited about that. It's hard to show, you know, here, but we are.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I had for tonight.
Council, what else you got? Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Lam.
I have a board health meeting on Thursday. I still need to send out the agenda. The main topics are the budget for public health, Seattle-King County, and a discussion on environmental health and safety in schools.
Anyone else? I have a regional transit committee meeting, so my letter should have landed by now. So we shall see what story we shall create with it. Anyone? Okay. Is there a motion? Well, is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
Can we just adjourn?
Oh, we don't have to.
Okay, good, because I'm just going to adjourn.
Let's just go.